All right, we're going to go ahead. We've got a lot to do yet tonight. I'm going to ask the clerk to go ahead and announce the meeting and call the roll.
A special session is being held on Thursday, February 4th, 2016, in the fifth floor conference room regarding the casino grant process, SVB donation and dignitary security. Roll call. Markley?
Here.
Walters, Philbrook. Bynum.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
McKernan.
Here.
Mugia.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Holland.
Here. All right, thank you very much. Thank you all for being here. I'm going to turn this over to Joe Connor for presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We're here tonight to talk about the UG grant processes. We started this through the standing committees and it's recommended that we bring some of these issues to the work session of the full commission to discuss a little further. I brought with me tonight Denise St. Omer. Denise works with the Greater Kansas City Community Foundation as a vice president, and she's been working with our particular account from the beginning. So, one of the important pieces of information was what role could they play for us in the future, what expanded role could they play? So, I thought Denise would be a good person to come if you have questions of her as we go through this. So, just by way of a little bit of the history, the administration and Human Services Standing Committee was tasked with looking at the non-CDBG grant processes that we had. We discussed drug and alcohol grants. I think there were some issues raised about the boards and commissions process, which will handle some of that, appointments, attendance, those kind of things. There's also the issue on that one of, do we actually need to have a board or not because you're not required to have one? Again, that's going to be evaluated through that boards and commissions process. The community funding application was the other one that we talked about. This is something that we started the last couple of years in the budget process. A couple of things came out of that is that we decided to retitle it, and I've got the title there, Citizen and Community Stakeholder Budget Initiatives. And we also thought it was important to change the date so that when we have our budget kickoff, that used to be the date it was due, which didn't give people really a lot of time to give us their comments. So, we pushed that to a week after the budget kickoff. So, people can come to the budget kickoff. If they hear and they have ideas, they can still submit them a week later, and then we'll work it through the budget cycle like we've had the last few years. I guess I'd ask, you know, Commissioner Mark or anybody on the committee, if I'm missing something, please interject on this.
No, I think that's good. Do you want me to go further in discussing our recommendations, or you have more?
I've got more.
Okay.
Well, I was kind of done with those two. If there's questions on those two, before we get into the other part.
We really like long names. It's the CCSBI.
Okay. The remaining discussion items are about the UG Hollywood Casino Grant Fund, and then also the Sutter Bond Vacation Village charitable contribution, which is kind of new to this mix. So, on the casino grant funds, the committee is, the Standing Committee is recommending that the 2015 guidelines carry over into 2016, and that's the information that's been provided to you prior to this meeting. And so, that's been one recommendation that's been made. The other is, is that they wanted more information to be brought forward to expand the role of the Greater Kansas City Community Foundation, and I've given you that proposal as well, what things would be covered and what the cost would be to that. So, and then on the Sutter Bond Vacation Village, we have the one-time contribution of $750,000 that was received in the fall, and then also there's an ongoing annual contribution from that development agreement, and the language from both of those have been provided to you. So, just a little bit about the background information this was provided. This has been the history of the casino grant fund, and the amount requested, applications received, the award amounts, the average amount of the award, just as an informational item. That was something that the committee asked for, and we wanted to share it with the full commission. And then we've got, you know, the information about the additional services from the community foundation. Again, that's, their full proposal was there. I've only listed on these slides the things that would be new to the process from last year.
Yes. Joe, I apologize if I missed it. Do we have a copy of this, and if not, can I get a copy of this?
Of the proposal?
PowerPoint, PowerPoint, yes. It was just emailed today.
No, the PowerPoint was not. I gave the actual, the full documents.
Oh, I see.
There's two emails that went out this week.
Right.
The first one had a series of documents with it, the spreadsheet about the grant history, the proposal from the community foundation. There was a letter from Mr. Henry on the Sutter Bond Vacation Village. And the 2015 grant guidelines that are being recommended to carry forward. The second email that went out had the specific language from both development agreements that talk about the definition, and talk about, on Sutter Bond's case, what their schedule is for their future payments that are going to come into us.
All right, thank you.
But we can send you the PowerPoint.
We certainly have it, yeah. That's not a problem. I did not send this today. I sent the other stuff. So, that was kind of it from an overview, from what the Standing Committee has recommended, and things that need to be discussed further. Again, from a staff perspective, you know, we can start to put together a timeframe. We just need some decisions to be made about what's the role of the community foundation going to be, what's the selection committee going to be, you know, and then we'll come back with, once we get some resolution on this, we'll prepare a document for the full commission meeting with a resolution that outlines this whole process.
Is that the end of your PowerPoint?
It is.
So, I'd ask Commissioner Markley, as the chair of the committee, to kind of walk through the recommendations.
All right. So, as you all know, we had a lot of discussion about this last year, and we sort of have taken, I think, the two extremes over the past years. We had a separate committee that did award grants initially, then we had the commissioners' award grants this past time around, and so, our committee is hoping that we found a compromise that will make both sets of commissioners who like those extremes happy. The idea is that we would use the same guidelines as last year. Commissioners would once again be allowed to award grants. However, the Greater Kansas City Community Foundation would play a little greater role this year. Last year, all they really did was collect applications for us. They would do a little additional analysis and provide us more information about the potential grantees in terms of their capacity, and whether they feel, upon their analysis, those agencies are capable of using the grant dollars and properly monitoring the grants and turning in the appropriate forms and all of those sorts of things. So, the idea is that it would still allow commissioners the ability to spend the dollars where they think it's most needed, but it would also provide some additional accountability and a way for us to provide a check against each other. Instead of us just saying, "Well, I don't like that agency. I don't think you should give them money, so I'm voting against your proposal," we would be able to say, "Well, you know, the recommendation of the foundation says that this agency doesn't have capacity to handle the grants." It would allow us to have a little additional information. So, that was the idea coming forward from this committee. I asked that it come to special session just because I knew there was a wide variance in what people were expecting, so I wanted to make sure that the entire commission had a chance to weigh in on that compromise. We do realize it's a compromise, so probably not everybody will be 100 percent happy with it, but we think that it's a good option moving forward to give both parties something that they are, that's important to them.
And I kind of broke down it for this PowerPoint, from their proposal. There's really grant development, services that could be offered to us, and then also grant monitoring. These are things that are in addition to what they did for us last year. So, when you look at their proposals, all kind of listed together, I just broke it out for this purposes to see, we get a little bit of both. You know, with the grant development, you're working with the applicants a little earlier in the process. Hopefully, you'll end up with better applications, and, you know, people will kind of know upfront. If you've kind of hit the mark, you haven't hit the mark, you'll get better quality. And then on the grant monitoring piece, you know, there'll be a lot more oversight on their part with applicants as they go through the year. Again, to answer questions, some, you know, there's a lot of things that happen with agencies when they get this kind of money, and so, just a little bit more oversight from our perspective.
Questions or comments? Commissioner Walker?
What do we know about the money that was awarded? Have we gotten a report of any kind that I've missed that would suggest that the recipients, the haves, misspent that money?
We, there's a six-month report due in the middle of December. We're still chasing down some that were late, and I think that right now, currently, there's five. So, I mean, I can give you the reports now with five missing, or we can try to collect all five and then hand them out at the same time. That's your preference, but we're.
Certainly, I think before we award grants again, we should know how, have some indication of performance on the part of those that received them, assuming that many will reapply again this year.
Okay. Commissioner King?
Joe, could you go back to where the Sutter Bomb one-time thing was? Where's that money?
That's part two of our discussion, I think.
Yeah, that's.
Commissioner McKernan?
Joe, there's no need to send the PowerPoint, because I was looking at the bullet points of this January 13th from the Greater Kansas City, and I do see that in the body of the text, what I was looking for, which was the cost for services.
Yeah.
So, we'd go double, maybe triple, depending on how deep we went, the administrative overhead on this, which would get us back to about the level we were in the first year, correct?
This would exceed the level of the first year. If you go, if you look at, whoops, if you look at that, the amount awarded there right in the middle, year one was probably the highest, year two, a little bit higher, and then in year three, of course, we went to less oversight. The things that they, they have, some of the things that are listed in their proposal, they've not provided for us before.
Okay.
So, it's certainly a big step up in service.
But again, there's value added to those services.
Correct, absolutely.
To all of us, and I certainly would endorse, go along with the proposed compromise, again, as another step in evolving this to the best process possible that bridges the gap between all perspectives on how it could or should. So, I would endorse the compromise.
Commissioner Bynum?
To Commissioner Walker's question at the Standing Committee level, I think I asked if we could be given the names of the grantees from 2015 who had either submitted their six-month reports or not, and you had forwarded that to us. It led me to, it was a fairly large list. It led me to hope that in an enhanced process, maybe some better communication. I know that in the initial grant award, the letter did say, "Your six-month report is due on this day, and your final report is due on this day," but I got the impression that a lot of the grantees did not see that, somehow did not make note of that, and there was no further communication on anyone's part that I'm aware of, that your grant report due date is coming.
Yeah.
So, I, maybe an enhanced communication could be a piece of expanded services as well. I would just request that.
I would say, Commissioner, that the community foundation did provide reminders and updates throughout this process. I think that's why that list has shrunk from when I gave it to you at the Standing Committee to now only being five. So, there's been.
So, I guess I will tell you that in talking to grantees, that is not what I've been told.
If I can answer that.
Use that microphone.
Oh, sorry. We have, part of the system that we use, we use an online application system, and we ask grantees to also submit their reports through the online system. So, the online system, the emails that go out as reminders are generated by the online system. We did have, we were having some issues with some of those emails being caught in people's spam or junk mail, and so, it would be, it wouldn't get directly to them. We did switch to a new system. Okay. This year that we brought online in December, that we believe will alleviate the emails going into the spam.
So, because I do think that reminder piece is helpful, not necessarily mandatory, but certainly helpful. And I would also, again, I think I asked this at the Standing Committee level, part of the reason why I asked about the reports was because I'd like to see them.
Sure.
So, I guess you've already answered that with Commissioner Walker's question, but I guess what you're saying is, once you have them all.
That's up, if you'd like, you have what we have now. I have them, but I was trying to wait until we got them all in.
Sure.
Because the list was shrinking, and so, I thought, well, let's wait until we get them all, and send that to communication.
I think it speaks to the outcomes. I think it speaks to what good is coming from the money. Thanks.
Commissioner Philbrook?
I appreciate the direction we're moving. Thank you, committee, because I really do want to see us make sure that our money is going to folks that are actually being good stewards of that money, and that they are furthering what the commission would like to see happen for our community. So, I really do, I do endorse this change, and would really love to look at the new list of candidates for this spring, because I'm going to feel a whole lot more comfortable about that group. Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments about this process? Is there a consensus to accept the recommendation of this committee? I don't. Yes, Commissioner Townsend? I don't, yes, Commissioner Townsend?
I just have one question and I had not had the time to look at it in detail. The only thing that I heard that I had a question about wasn't going to comment about it until I had read it. But if we're, if you're asking for an endorsement. My question is if the foundation is going to be involved after we, as commissioners, have made recommendations? Or are they going to more or less vet some of these people before? What I'm getting at, I would very much hate to put forward entities to get this money only to hear later that they may be deemed not to have the capacity to work with it. Is there any way that that can be done ahead of time and call down that list?
I'll let Denise answer that question.
Sure. So one of the things I think that's important is, and it's why you see a range in services, is because at the Community Foundation, we really take direction from our clients. And so the recommendations that we make, they are, they look a little different depending on the client we're working with. For some of our clients, the recommendations we're making is they meet the eligibility criteria. For others, what the recommendation we will make, what we never do is say, "Say, you should not fund this organization." And what we never do is say, is not provide you with all of the applications. What we would do in our recommendation is we would say, and part of the service that is included in this is if we receive an application and there are some concerns about whether or not the organization can actually do, you know, can follow through with the program, then we talk with them. And then the information that we get from them, we share and it goes out as part of our recommendation. So the recommendation, if there's an organization, an example I might give would be if you have an organization that has put forth a proposal where they would like to start a new program and they are requesting that the unified government be the sole funder of that new program. One of the things what we would just say in the recommendation is, is that we have had a conversation with the organization about how to make sure that they understand that these are one-year grants with no guarantee of continued funding. And so we'd ask them if they could articulate how they would be able to continue the program or in a situation where there might have, might be the unified government, the commissioners might make a determination to fund that program at less than the full amount, how that might affect their, the program design and the program implementation. And then we would just share that information back with you so that you would have all of the information you need to make, to make an informed decision.
Okay, thank you. That sounds reasonable because those were some of the criteria that I know I was looking at before. One of the things I would hate to see lost, and I hope it's not lost in the process, is that smaller organizations are given an opportunity to receive these grants as they were in the past instead of the bigger organizations only. There were some smaller groups for which this was a great funding opportunity. Not that it was their sole basis for funding, so, thank you. Other than that, it sounded reasonable. That was the only question I wanted to raise about it. Thank you.
All right. I would, in the past, Mr. Bach, I'll ask you, oh, just a reminder on the process. We, it seems like we formally adopted our plan each year when we launched the thing. So with the consensus we have, they will package this as a resolution for the grant funding that will come before the commission for a vote. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So that will be, and we will, in terms of timeline, when do you anticipate bringing it before the commission? When do we anticipate opening the grant cycle?
I mean, we can probably be ready by the end of the month for the 25th of February.
Okay.
To bring that back with the, everything we've provided in the years past, schedule, resolution, guidelines, we'll have all that put together. I think we should be able to do that.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And thanks to the Committee for vetting this ahead of time.
So the other issue that's remaining is what Commissioner King would like to talk about now, I guess, so.
No pressure.
Yeah, there's no, can you put it back up? Where's that money going?
So in our committee, we have a larger donation coming from Schlitterbahn than would be typical because there was a period where they didn't make the donation and it's now all lumped together. Not knowing for sure what the reaction would be to our initial proposal and the other grant item, we didn't really want to dive into this one without knowing. So I think the question, the initial question is, does this $750,000 go into the grant bucket with the rest of the grant money or are we doing something different with it? We need to kind of answer that question so we can get an idea of where we go from here.
Yeah, and just, I want to make it crystal clear, that 750 is one time. The schedule for the remaining years is in your packet, like the next year it's 100,000 and it ramps up. It'll never be 750,000. This is the, this was a catch-up provision like Commissioner Markley said in the, when the development deal was renegotiated. So I just want to make sure we're clear about that.
And did you all make a recommendation of the Schlitterbahn letter?
We did not. Like I said, we had some discussion about whether it would go in the general grant bucket, but we didn't want to make that recommendation without knowing what our final decision was going to be on what the grant bucket looked like and what our guidelines were going to look like. So I think that we just kind of left it up for discussion depending on how the remaining discussion tonight went. I mean, I will just say personally, my thought is, let's put it in the grant bucket. Commissioners all have their recommendations from Schlitterbahn. They can choose to make donations in accordance with that recommendation or not individually as we go forward. But that's just my personal thought.
So I do have a question.
Okay.
Around this. We all sitting here have a letter that has been presented to us. But I don't believe that the audience has privy to the recommendation of what the Schlitterbahn folks are recommending. And I think that we should let them know that whether we follow through with their recommendations or not. I just think that information should be there. And so.
Should we, should we have Mr. Connor share that recommendation?
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
So there's four different points in this letter that Mr. Gary Henry has respectfully requested UG's consideration for directing the 750,000 in the following manner. Number one is 500,000 towards the capital campaign for the community center in downtown Kansas City, Kansas. Number two, 50,000 towards the Urban Scholastic Center. Number three is 50,000 to the Kiwanis, Kansas City West Kiwanis Club. Number four is regarding the remaining 150,000 and let the commissioners collectively and individually decide for the 150,000 that's remaining.
Commissioner King?
All right. Mine is the Kiwanis and what was the other one?
Urban Scholastic Center.
How much money does that leave us?
150,000.
Oh, mine, and plus the 500.
Oh, then.
So it's 650,000. And we have, and if I figure this out right, if it's 650,000 and we divvy amongst us 11, it would give us 59,090 dollars to spread around in our districts. And that's the way I'd like to see the money go.
Yeah, Commissioner Walker?
I certainly appreciate Mr. Henry's recommendations, but that was not part of the deal when we originally did this. We, we didn't, I mean, we, as I recall, there was some debate about one of them. Maybe it was the casino donating money directly to various groups within Wyandotte County. And that, at that time, the commission was not so inclined to agree to their choices and for the. I think, I don't have any problem with what Mr. Kane suggested, but I think if we're going to give 25,000 to one and some money to the other, they should apply, just like everybody else. And as commissioners, we can decide whether we're going to do it or not. You know, I appreciate Mr. Henry's willingness to put 500,000 in the Healthy Campus. I had this discussion with the mayor earlier. A good project, worthwhile project, I want to see it move forward. But I've already agreed to put 6 million dollars of public money and that may not include any additional incentives or whatever might come down the road to make, make the deal come to realization. If commissioners want to make a contribution to that project, I don't have heartburn with that. I don't disagree with that. But again, I would rather see, I said this last year, I'll say it this year. I'd rather see a number of these organizations that are worthy, that are doing good work, but in a smaller way, have a chance at success. They're not getting 6 million dollars. And maybe 6 million dollars is, you know, it's small in the total concept of the mayor's project. I realize that. But I'd rather see it go into individual buckets and you put it where you, where you think it best goes based on the information that's provided. And that's where I stand on it.
Commissioner Philbrook?
So where would, where would this go into? This 750 and then the additional approximately 100,000 dollars or so every year. Where would that go? Like out? Yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure because then, then it has the same stipulations of what it needs to go to and all that. So we add this into the Hollywood Casino grant money?
Yeah, I'm not envisioning, excuse me, mayor. I'm not envisioning two application processes for two separate pools of money. One, one application process and the money then distributed.
Okay, so that goes into the newly named group of money, right?
It would be 1.25 million dollars instead of a half million. This year, there'd be 1.25 million available if all 750 was added to the casino half million. Right?
Yes. And as an at-large commissioner, I will say it here publicly, I'll be looking to make partnerships with the district commissioners in each of your districts where I can be helpful. And I have some ideas of my own, but hopefully my little bit added to yours and spread amongst you will make, make a better, better distribution of the money.
Well, I'm sure all of us will appreciate that, along with the people that receive it. Thanks, Hal.
Commissioner Johnson?
No quid pro quo either.
So if, just considering the direction that it seems that we're going, would that require an additional fee from the Community Foundation if in fact we were looking at 1.2 million versus a half a million dollars in terms of fees from you all to vet this, these applications?
No, I don't, here's what I would tell you is I think that since you will not be making changes in the guidelines and the eligibility, I would anticipate that the number of applications that you will receive will continue to be in that same range. So I don't think that you will have, if I believed it was going to result in a considerably larger number of applications, then it might impact that. But I think what you will just get is you will get the same number of applications. You'll probably just have more money to, to fund and you might get some requests for larger amounts.
Thank you.
Commissioner Walker and then Commissioner Bynum?
Yeah, I wanted to, am I correct in remembering that our request alone last year exceeded 1.2 million? Yeah, so I don't think we're going to have any problem with requests.
Commissioner Bynum?
Just some questions. First question is, Commissioner Walker said that as far as the downtown Healthy Campus, we had already agreed to 6 million in public dollars. And that was prior to my arrival, but I thought those were casino grant dollars.
It's a, it's a pledge back that we would go into debt funding. We were looking at using.
Debt funding, okay.
The discussion that came from that was that we were getting so much money from the casino on an annual basis and we would be able to pledge some of that money toward that debt funding service on an annual basis.
Okay, we're going to pay it back with casino revenue. Okay, that's, that helps me understand that.
But not with your different revenue.
A different, okay, thank you. So I wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly. With the development agreement from the casino, there were requests that we put 10,000 to the Chambers of Commerce and 25,000 to the CBB. And are we doing that now?
Yes, that is money that is directed toward those entities. So in fact, that check just came into our office today.
Okay.
And we take that money and we divvy it out accordingly to those agencies, just as, as that contract dictates.
So as part of their gift, they did ask for and receive monies be given to specific entities.
Yeah, that was more of a contractually agreed upon. It was not part of a contribution package. This is a part that comes to you. Part of that package was, here's your 500,000 dollars. You decide where it goes. These other ones are all laid out specifically where they go.
Okay, so then when the Schlitterbahn contribution comes forward, the 750,000 is partly a result of timing. Is that right? I guess I would say, is there a compromise for this group around somewhere within the context of the letter that they've asked for? And what Commissioner Kane's putting forward? Is there an opportunity for some level of contribution from the 750,000 to the Healthy Campus? Maybe an amount lower than 500,000. I want to also say they are asking for 50,000 to Urban Scholastic and 50,000 to KCK West Kiwanis. And I am a member of that club, as is Commissioner Philbrook. And I just want to make that statement publicly. It's a volunteer organization, so there's no paid employees. I'm not an officer. I'm not a director. And I had, when I first saw this letter, I took this to Chief Legal Counsel, Ken Moore, and made him aware of that because I wouldn't want there to be any conflict, real or perceived, around that, so.
Yeah, Commissioner Bynum nor myself are on the, are on the Board of Directors.
But I did want to make it known that it's a club that I belong to as a member, as well as Commissioner Philbrook, so.
I think though that we should encourage our club to put forth a request to grant under our.
So I just, you know, for whatever that's worth, I guess I'm asking, could the body be in a compromise mode for a some-dollar amount to the Healthy Campus with the balance going to what you suggest? And it sounded like you were saying, leave those two 50,000 dollar contributions as they are, take the balance, roll it into the bigger grant fund. So I'm just asking for, is there, is there any spirit for some portion of the 500 to be put into the Healthy Campus?
Not for me.
Okay.
Commissioner Markley?
And I guess my thought is that the compromise is that each of us commissioners has the opportunity to award our portion of the dollars to the things that are recommended in that letter, assuming that they apply.
Commissioner Walker?
Commissioner Bynum, I will assure you that if the mayor and the various sources of revenue, the private sector, come within 500,000 dollars at the cost of this, I will support an additional 500,000 in public debt. If we're that close to doing a deal, we're not going to let 500,000. But this is money we can do immediate good with right now. And we can issue more debt, 500,000 thereabouts, if that is the only thing separating us from doing the deal.
Commissioner Kane?
And you're right, Hal. But I'd be, you know, if we got to that ballpark, we'd be there. But we have an opportunity now to build the park that you'd like to build. And the money's sitting right there and it's something that people can see, touch and feel. And right now, they can't see much. So I'd sure like to give them something that says, here we are, we have done this. So that's why I'm saying no. But like Hal said, if we're close, then I'm okay with that.
Yes, Commissioner Murkia?
Yeah, so I just want to add that mine is really more, my two cents is really, I don't know what you would call it, more legal and administrative. So I requested the development agreement from the Schlitterbahn Vacation Village Development Agreement. agreement from the Schlitterbaum Vacation Village Development Agreement, and it, it says, you can, you can have a copy of it, and I really encourage, especially new commissioners, how we distribute money, we're usually, our administrator is usually very good about spelling that out in our agreements, and so we know exactly what we're getting into at the time we enter into that agreement, and it's very specific that this money should be designated by the UG, that's the exact terminology, so if you all want a copy of that, you don't have to ask for the whole development agreement?
It was sent out to everyone.
Oh, I didn't know if everyone got it, okay, so, so that was my first comment, and then truly, Commissioner Bynum, I really love your disclosure, I would encourage you though, in regard to your, and Commissioner Philbrook's position on the Kiwanis, I'm becoming a master of ethics, and I will tell you, I would request an opinion from your administrator if you haven't already, because if there's any indication on the Board of Directors or a membership roster that's presented to the Greater Kansas City Community Foundation and it all carries your title of Commissioner, that's abuse of prestige of office, I feel like I should have a law degree in ethics at this point, so.
No, no, stop and re, stop and say that again, Commissioner, because you lost me at the, at the implication of Commissioner.
Yeah, so, yeah, so whether, it doesn't matter, all of us serve, that's how we're involved, we all serve on different organizations, that's why we're, commissioners were involved in our community, and so whether you're paid or not, it's not always substantial interest, sometimes it's the prestige of your office that you hold that influences decision-making. So I would just encourage you that if your title is used in where you are a member, which wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing, however, when they submit that grant application, if that title is on there, then that violates the prestige of office clause of ethics. So I'm telling you as your friend, and a peer who doesn't want to see you or Commissioner Philbrook get in any trouble, that it's very important, and I appreciate Commissioner Philbrook's comments about wanting to tell Kiwanis to apply for this money, which I would agree with her, but we need to make sure as commissioners, we tell everyone that is eligible and interested to apply for this money, otherwise it shows preferential treatment.
So, I'm sorry, but part of the, I guess the reason I was asking and bringing that forward was because if we followed points two and three of the Schlitterbaum request letter, there is no application, it's done.
What point two and three?
Points two and three of the Schlitterbaum request letter say, give 50,000 here and give 50,000 here, so there's no application, there's no application process, if-
Yeah, if you-
If I'm tracking with what Commissioner Kane is recommending.
Yeah, and so I would just say that Schlitterbaum, our development agreement does not say Schlitterbaum Vacation Village gets to decide how the charitable dollars are spent. That says specifically in the legal language of the document that that's designated by the UG Commission, and then I'll go back to our original conversations, is that we have a process for how money is distributed at this government, whether it be during the budget process, or it be during the casino grant process, we've been really intentional about making sure the process is established so that there's a level playing field and everybody has the same access to these dollars. So that's why I'm saying, to deviate from this agreement would be, I think, I mean, I don't think it would be a terrible thing, I just think it would be better to follow at the-
So you're disagreeing with Mr. Kane, you think all 750 should go into the group and not the two 50,000s be separated?
Yeah, I think that the 750, the full amount should go into the grant process, however, I think it is completely fine for those listed organizations, the two that you listed, to make an application just like everybody else does through the normal process, and obviously, just as Commissioner Walker said, there are a number of people that have the same interest in those organizations that are representative up here, that would be more than supportive of that request.
I am a rotarian, I'll go on record, yes.
The, I'm having a bad day here, but they're giving us 750,000, and they're asking us to put 100,000 over here. If I were them, I'd be upset, you know, that at least the, the first 100 grand goes where they want it to go, because they're giving us another 650,000. I mean, don't look a gift horse in the mouth, you know, and, and we're modifying the tail end of it so we can spread the wealth there, but if 50, they want the 100 grand out of 750 to go there, I don't have a problem with, with the request, and I don't think they should have to fill out an application, they're giving us the money.
Okay, okay, so, we have, I think we have a consensus that, a broad consensus, that at least 650,000 of it should go into the general fund. I've not heard anyone, well, Commissioner Bynum asked if there was compromise language on the 500, and I haven't heard anyone speak up in favor of that, so I'm in-
Just clarify, you're the grant fund, not the general fund.
Thank you, no, the general grant, thank you.
Nice try, guys. He's trying to rip it out.
He stole my heart. The general grant.
Thank you, into the grant fund. The question then is, the only, the only remaining, so there is general consensus on that item, if, if I'm clear, is that right? The question is, they made, they made three requests, and the proposal from Commissioner Kane is that those two requests be honored, and Commissioner Mergea is suggesting that it all go into the grant fund. So is there a direction that this commission wants to go with those two proposals? We just need to come to a consensus on that. Commissioner Johnson.
I'm pretty familiar with the Urban School Asset Center, and they are doing great work over there. I think that in the spirit, and I would like to see them apply, within the spirit of how we're doing our grant process right now, I think I'd like to see those organizations have an application in, and I think both of them are definitely worthy of, of receiving money, but I think that just in the spirit of how we're doing the, the process now, in the, in the spirit of compromise and trying to make sure that we're all on the same page, I think it would be good to encourage them to at least have an application on file.
Okay. Do others have strong feelings about it?
I agree.
Commissioner?
I'm not sure where I am with, with everybody else, except to say, I believe the entire amount should go into the bucket, as Commissioner Markley said.
But not Doug's bucket?
Not Doug's bucket.
The grant bucket.
I just told Doug he could apply.
That there would be no other formalities, other than ones we've already talked about, for whoever the entity was that wanted to apply. I agree with Commissioner Walker that we don't get that many opportunities to aid smaller organizations, viable ones, so I would just like to see the entire go in there. Now, my question is, if we choose to as commissioners give toward the fund, would that be allowable? I'm also thinking, and what I had in mind was, Schlitterbaum and the last budget hearing where we were talking, well, budget cycle, so to speak, a slide for Parkwood, I, you know, to me, it sounds almost a similar kind of thing, but I would like to see the entire amount go into the casino grant fund bucket.
Okay, so, there's been two, is there anyone who wants to jump on Kane's train here and stick with those two? Because I'm not, I couldn't hurt anybody else, does anyone want to support that, or is the rest of the commission wanting to put it all into the one place? All right, I'm seeing everyone. Commissioner Philbrook, I don't want to take the microphone away from you.
Oh darn, I was hoping you would, so I can stay out of trouble. One of the reasons why I do agree with Commissioner Kane, because we've been down the road with Schlitterbaum on some other issues, and we have strong camaraderie with, with Schlitterbaum, and our group, now, in full disclosure, the Kiwanis West Group does do a lot of children's activities in conjunction with Schlitterbaum, and, and our scholarships and stuff like that, so that, that is why they were wanting to give money to this group, okay? So having said all that, I can fully understand though, why other folks would want it to be across the board and fair, so there you go, there's where I am, I'll go with the group.
Okay. Commissioner Bynum.
So my question for Mr. Bach is, in the development agreement, does the, does the fact that the 750 was going to happen in 15, and instead it's happening in 16, does it just push the rest of that language forward a year?
That donation was made to us in 2015, we have that money, it is in our account now, what it, it did occur later in the year, so there was a provision as we went through it, when it would trigger the next year.
Okay.
But they didn't close, we didn't close on the bonds in a, in a fashion that allowed for the 2015 100,000 to start, so the first year of the 100,000 will start in 2016.
Okay.
And we'll get that money in September, I believe, is what the date is.
And then we'll just expense it through this process?
Right, then it'll be-
According to this grant timeline.
As you deem necessary, that money can go where you direct it.
Okay, Walker and then Mergea.
I, I just want to state the obvious, you know, they're not giving us 750,000 out of the goodness of their heart. This was a bargain for negotiated deal, they get, I'm assuming, I'm not a corporate tax lawyer, but they probably get some kind of a deduction for this 750,000 that offsets profits, and, you know, if they want to give the Kiwanis 25,000, or anybody, they're not limited at 750,000, they, they can give money. I, you know, it's nothing against Schlitterbaum, they're a great organization, kids have a lot of fun out there, and I, you know, that, he recommended it, and we considered it, and, you know, but we made a deal, we bargained, and we took this in lieu of taking additional money directly to the unified government, so that we would have money to donate to 501(c)(3)'s. Otherwise, there'd be no money for 501(c)(3)'s, because Doug would find a way to spend that money.
Commissioner Mergea.
So, Joe, I'm assuming you advertise this funding opportunity to the general public?
We advertise it, we, we put it out everywhere that we can, we have two information sessions every year, they're generally attended by, you know, 40 to 50 people each year.
Do you have something in writing that you use to advertise this opportunity?
We do.
Can you do me a favor, I, I'm saying this also out loud, since it appears from last summer that we apparently as commissioners have some sort of a duty to advertise on behalf of these opportunities, I'd like you to send me that advertisement, I want to put it on my political Facebook page so that everyone in my district that follows that also is aware of that, I'd also like to make sure it gets to livable neighborhoods and it gets in their mailboxes. I personally, for the record, will be attending every neighborhood group meeting in my district and making sure that, that, that opportunity gets delivered, that's exactly what I did with CDBG funds, and I'll do that again with these funds. So I just want to make sure, and if there are any other ideas that you have for commissioners on how to do outreach, I'll be glad to do that in my district and whatever else anybody plans to do.
All right, so it sounds like we've reached consensus, the whole 750 is going into the grant bucket with the other half million dollars from the casino, and I think that's the last item on this agenda?
It's for me.
Okay, I will-
That's all I care about.
I will say, as a long time, I think only, all but for the first year, season ticket holder at Schlitterbaum, I'll invite all the commissioners to join me on Varoot this summer. We can only go three at a time, so there's no quorum.
Like you could talk on that hill anyway.
Yeah, that's right.
What's the total amount?
1.25 million. All right, that brings us to our last agenda item for the five o'clock before our seven o'clock, and it is, I'll turn it over to Doug Bach.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an update requested by the commission, as we started a new program in 2015, it was actually a program we initiated in 2014, under then former Chief Ellen Hansen, to develop a dignitary protection program within the unified government. In January of 2015, Chief Ziegler implemented this program and put it in place, he has gone through the year now of having a full year of operation, about midway through the year, he'll note to you, he did make some changes to this program, but now we have a, a full year, so he wanted to come back in, as this was a new program, and report on how the operation has worked, and it's gone from here. So with that, Chief Ziegler, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'll give you a quick overview of how we got to where we're at with the dignitary protection. In 2010, if you remember, there was an incident at a Florida school board meeting where they had let a, an employee go, the husband became upset, he appeared before the board, he brandished a firearm, he began shooting at the board members before he was shot and killed by police. Then in 2011, Gabriella Gifford, Democrat Congresswoman in Arizona, was shot along with 17 other people while she was hand, she was holding a Congress on the Corner event at Safeway. Six of those people that were shot were killed in that incident. And then, in 2014, in January, what kind of brought this all home for the Police Department was, we ended up having a shooting on the back steps of City Hall, where an individual who came out of the building, was approached by another subject and shot in the head and killed. At that time, we locked down City Hall, was locked down until we could determine the stability of the scene, what was going on, was the suspect gone, and it made us start thinking about whether or not we were doing anything or enough for security at City Hall and for our elected officials. At that point, we started researching the idea of doing a dignitary protection detail. We reached out to the Kansas Highway Patrol, who handles the governor's dignitary protection, we reached out to Kansas City of Missouri, who does Mayor Sly James, kind of started putting together a plan and seeing what the needs and the costs would be. So we ended up coming up with a pilot program that we rolled out last year, and if you remember, at the beginning of 2015, I came and I said, this program was going to cost approximately 250,000 out of our current Police Department resources, and I'll have the numbers for you here in a minute of where we ended up at. So some of the duties of the dignitary protection detail, that as we developed our research and went through this process, we came up with, main thing is to protect the mayor and the commissioners, they're also available to address issues of concern for judges and other elected officials in Wyandotte County. We want to make sure that if there's a threat made of any kind, or a concern from any elected official, that we have resources that we can dedicate to vetting that out. We also, the dignitary detail, when it's here, it provides an extra presence at City Hall of security. They consult with City Hall security on issues, like we've had packages delivered here, suspicious packages to City Hall, they work with security here in the building, as well as act as a liaison between City Hall and the Police Department on what resources need to be rolled this way. They provide a layer of security at the commission meetings and standing committee meetings. In the past, particularly this meeting, special sessions and standing committees, we would have to have, or make arrangements for an officer to be present during these meetings to provide security. We still use a commander attending the commission meetings on Thursdays for the Sergeant of Arms function, but the standing committees, we were already covering with resources from the Police Department. We switched that duty over to being handled by the dignitary guys in 2015. And they evaluate threats, they establish whether or not the threats are credible, they determine a level of response or an action plan, that typically will include if there's a credible threat, they start making contact with other units in the Police Department for additional resources to roll this way. They also will coordinate threats with the Detective Bureau, get detectives involved and determine whether or not criminal cases need to be worked and submitted to the District Attorney's Office. They do, or they do have the ability to mine social media some, they do do that, checking for threats, especially if something's brought to their attention, they will jump on social media and see if they can run that down. They facilitate movement of the elected officials, you know, the mayor is going to a meeting, they will make sure that he gets there safely, leave safely. In the past, we've had the mayor of, I think it was Munchacon, Mexico, come to our city, and when then, when he came here, we pooled police resources to provide the dignitary protection detail function during that time period. Now, we're in a position where if that was to happen, we have people who are well-trained and can kind of lay out a plan for us on how to do that and provide protection. So, last year in 2015- So, last year in 2015, we had twenty-three incidents in which the dignitary protection detail took some type of action to vet the threat out. The reason that's significant is that's twenty-three times that we did not roll additional resources from the streets to complete offense reports. On a couple of occasions, occasions, the dignitary officers completed the investigative reports and did an excellent job in vetting it out, and then conferred with detectives on whether or not charges needed to be filed. I kind of equate what they're doing, kind of like the school resource officer. We put the school resource officers in the high schools as a way to reduce the number of calls for service that we were sending district officers there. The dignitary guys are doing the same thing for us here at City Hall. So, we'll talk about budget and what we spent last year. So, last year for salaries and benefits was 209,000. We do, we put the, we put the job up as a posting for interest, and we do have two of our senior officers working in that position, and that's why the salaries are at 209. So, last year, we estimated, from looking at everything that we were wanting to do, that we were going to spend somewhere between 24,000 and 30,000 on overtime. About the middle of the year, we noticed that the trend was we were spending a lot of overtime. So, we went back and we abolished the unit, reposted it, and shifted the hours. So, we have one guy that's working early, and then another guy comes in later in the day. So, we've got a bigger span of coverage without having to pay the overtime for that. And that, I believe, had a big impact in keeping the overtime, you know, under 30,000. We did spend $10,000 last year on professional training. You know, the Police Department, we've never invested that kind of money to train officers on dignitary detail, and we were providing that function. Going into 2016, we will not have this expense, but I will tell you, this was some excellent training that we sent not only the dignitary officers to, we also sent other resources in the PD that we would use to augment if we needed to for threats as they come in, if we needed some additional resources. The miscellaneous cost that we spent was $3,000. That was for equipment and whatnot that they needed, that they typically are not provided by the Police Department if they're in uniform. So, the total for the program was $248,000 last year, which is about what we were estimating the cost would be. Last year, we did change the hours like I spoke, spoke about to mitigate some of the overtime expense. We did try to define their mission and create an SOP, a Standard Operating Procedures Manual for them. We provided the training, purchased new equipment. We did hold individual meetings with the commissioners to assess any of their security needs. One additional thing that we did along those same lines is we, the Sheriff's Department is responsible for security over at the courthouse. But we did set, we, we had a meeting and participated in the meeting where we talked about security needs for the judges and elected officials. Out of that, there were some improvements made to the camera systems at the county courthouse, the monitoring of those cameras and whatnot. So, you know, I'd like, we like to think that that was a benefit added just for the simple fact that we opened this conversation up about improving security for elected officials in Wyandotte County. In 2016, we're, we're going to continue to evaluate how to make the unit work effectively and efficiently as possible. And we'll also be looking at our response protocols for high and low-level threats that are made against elected officials. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Commissioner Kane.
Well, Mayor, the two individuals that you have watching are outstanding. I enjoyed my conversation with them when I met with them and couldn't have picked better people. With that being said, I still think it's a waste of money. You know, we don't have enough cameras over by where the judges are at, over where the Sheriff's Department's at. And we can take some of that money and purchase the cameras, so we wouldn't have somebody leaving the bag in the back. And, you know, we tell everybody that we want this to be a place that you want to work, live, and play. But no other small municipality carries the folks around, because I called several of them. And it just, in my mind, and, and I'm going to tell you something. I think if we put a complaint box up on the door somewhere of how the employees feel about, you'd be surprised. This would be the second thing compared to the insurance that just went up. So, I don't like the idea, and I think that we should be able to vote on whether they have it instead of being said, here's $200,000 that the mayor's going to spend at his own discretion.
I will be clear. I don't spend this at my discretion. This was the Police Department initiated and the Police Department implemented. This is not in the mayor's budget.
You know, one thing I would say, you know, you, you mentioned, Commissioner, that you had talked to some of the surrounding jurisdictions. You know, I can't think of any jurisdiction in the metro where, you know, maybe a KCMO where there was a shooting on the steps of City Hall, and that was concerning for the Police Department. We took that serious. You know, trying to lock down City Hall after an event and then working after the fact. You know, the Police Department, with us implementing this program, it didn't detract from the level of service we provided. We're able to provide this service in addition, I mean, in addition to everything else we're doing. And, you know, I, we kind of use security kind of like a layer. It's layered on. And this is an additional layer here at City Hall that, you know, if there was an issue that came up, they can address real quickly. And we, we think it's a worthwhile program. We would like to keep this program going. But obviously, you know, I'm going to take the direction that I'm given.
Well, and I still have the right to the elected person, the people that have complained about why we have this. And I realize it's your job, and you want to make sure that Doug and the mayor are happy with what your work is. I'm just telling you, the people out there don't like it. And, and I agree, when you go to Kansas City, Missouri, or something like that, that you should have some people. But not just to run around Wyandotte County.
Commissioner Philbrook.
Point of information. So, you said you spent $100,000 on training?
$10,000.
Oh, $10,000. I'm sorry. Brain went dead. Sorry, we're talking about all this money. Excuse me, $10,000. So, that $10,000, did that train your men well enough that they can train others, or are they're not trainers?
We didn't train just the dignitary. We trained other resources inside the PD. We believe right now we have enough resources that we could handle potentially any threat that was to come through. I, it was not a train-the-trainer course. Typically, you've got a, those cost a lot more money.
Okay.
This was an organization that we brought in and made available to other agencies in the metro.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to know where we were in that level. Okay, thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Commissioner McKernan.
Chief, I always appreciate you, you do such a thoughtful job of putting together proposals, following through, gathering data, determining your success, and then making changes to the program. And you certainly have outlined how you've done that with this. Commissioner Kane, I don't want to spend this money, but I am not convinced that we don't, at some level, need to start spending this money, just because of the evolution of events in our, our country. So, while I don't want to spend it, I think that we should be open to some variation of this in the future, at least bits and pieces of it as it relates to certain events within City Hall, in commission meetings, whatever that might be. I think we need to be open to that. Because unfortunately, with current nationwide and world events, I'm afraid that it's just getting to the point where all municipalities may need to start budgeting for expenses just like this, unfortunately. So, do I want to spend it? No. Do I think that at some level, it would be a wise investment for us? Yeah, I think I do.
Commissioner McGee.
So, Chief, can you pull up your presentation again? Keep going back. Is that the beginning? Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, go. So, you, is this, this isn't the beginning. You were talking about, you showed some slides of an event. That's okay. Let me just tell you this. You, all the things that you've listed out here are good things to have security around. I agree with you. The shooting of this Congresswoman at an outside event, absolutely. When commissioners or the mayor are going out to public events where there isn't security already, where they feel like it might be a hostile crowd, or the topic they're discussing might be controversial, calling you and coordinating security, I think, is very appropriate. So, I think that's a good thing. As to the isolated incident of the shooting outside City Hall, I do think that was a very much an isolated situation. It was more the location of the people than it was intended to occur on the steps of City Hall. That's my understanding of the situation. So, I do think that's a very much an isolated incident. But to that point, you, we already have officers here. So, I'm not sure what could have been done differently than what you're already doing, which is there are officers sitting at every entry point that are armed, that are available to protect all of us, not just the elected officials, but our mayor and, and all the people that come in and out of City Hall. And then if you flip through here, I think you're right, Chief. Our Police Department in general needs to spend money on training, on how to protect our elected officials. But I think my issue is the way it's been done over the last year. You know, I, I voted for this. I thought this, you know, this is a great idea. I got your presentation. What startled me, I didn't even follow up on this. What startled me is the public comments that Commissioner Kane made at the last public meeting where we discussed this, which was that the mayor had taken his security guard to a bar, that they were going to his church and sitting through his mass while he was at his second job at his church. I just fundamentally disagree that if you're going to go to work somewhere else and there's a security issue, your other employer should be covering the cost of that, not the taxpayers in Wyandotte County. And I just, I think that if someone's going to go to a restaurant or a bar where they feel like a violent situation could break out, they shouldn't go there. When I go out to eat or go out to an event, I don't call you and ask you to go with me. So, I, I guess I don't understand that. I think the other thing is, is that I haven't seen any commissioner or heard that any commissioner has utilized this security to the, to the extent that it is, seems to be private security for the mayor. And I absolutely think our mayor needs to be protected and made sure that he is safe. I absolutely agree with that. But I think there are ways to do that within the confines of the way the money is currently budgeted. For example, how I do, how I handle my politics in maybe potentially dangerous situations is if I'm going to a neighborhood meeting and I feel like there's a situation that could get out of hand, I make sure that I touch base with the community police officer and that he's going to be there. I talk to him and tell him, hey, something could get out of hand here. And so, he usually sits by me to make sure that everything's okay. The beautiful part about that is that no one in the community group suspects anything different because they're used to seeing that officer around all the time. So, it also doesn't inflame a situation. For example, if I'm going to, for example, like the Congresswoman did here, she went to a corner with the Congressman's speech. If I felt like there was some indication that someone was going to do something, I would absolutely contact you. I mean, if, I guess my point is this. If you're going to say that you don't know when these things are going to occur, then I would say each and every one of us need a constant security guard by our side all the time, everywhere I go. I will tell you right now, I'm not in favor of that. I don't want them, but I don't, I'm sorry, I, I like our police officers. But you all don't need to follow me around. I'm a big girl. I can take care of myself. If, if I feel like there's a situation where it might require an armed officer, I would absolutely call you. I just think that's a much better use of tax dollars. I also think that most typical things we go to as politicians, like luncheons, or big conventions, or conferences, or things like that, you know, there typically is security at those events. And typically, you know, the chance of a regular pedestrian getting hurt there is just as high as me getting hurt at those kinds of events. So, that's where I'm at. I think the way it's currently used ninety percent of the time is as private detail for our mayor. And that's, if, if the mayor feels like he needs private detail, I think that should come out of the mayor's budget. If, if not, I think you ramping up your department, your, your whole PD is great. Educating them on a new type of training is fantastic also. But that should be, I think, treated as just incorporated into the culture of the Police Department, that you have dignitaries and you need to pay attention when they're around.
Commissioner Philbrook.
Well, so, there's been several occasions that I have stood in for the mayor. And on those occasions, there was security detail. I didn't ask for it. It automatic, automatically was there because I was standing in the, in for the mayor. And so, there's been several times where I've had him there. And I wish I could foretell, this is, you know, and you're talking about being afraid of an issue or thinking there's going to be a problem. I would say that ninety-five percent of the time, when there is an attack or I've ever been in a questionable position, it was a total surprise. So, you know, I don't want to say that I can tell ahead of time if somebody is going to go off. I wish we could. Then it would be a lot cheaper.
I would say too, just for the record, the first month that we did this, the security detail went absolutely everywhere I went, seven days a week for those first four weeks, to find out what I did on my schedule, and then made an assessment about where they should go. I think we cleared up at the last meeting, yes, they did go down to Brits with me. They did not have a beer. We should have a record. I did. They did not. And they said, we don't need to be here. And they stopped coming. So, that was cleared up at the last meeting. They have made a decision based on where I am, where they think security is. That's the police's professional decision. I will say that I have a car from the Unified Government. Sly James does not. Sly James, security detail, has cars. They pick him up in the morning and they tuck him in bed at night. And they go everywhere he goes. If he runs errands, they run errands. If he goes to a restaurant with his wife, they go to the restaurant with his wife. I run all my errands on my own, all of the time. I'm on my time. I'm on my time. When I'm at a public event and where people know where I am, the police have determined that they want security detail at those events. One of the events, and I talked to Emmanuel Cleaver about this extensively, he said they need to evaluate whether or not someone needs to be at your church. Emmanuel Cleaver said when he was mayor that he had a number of incidents at his church. I can tell you, a lot of people come to my church to meet the mayor. I had one poor little lady who sat through the whole worship service because she wanted to tell me about a branch that was down in her street. And that was very sweet. I've also had people come to my church who were not sweet and came there to see the mayor. And my family's there, and it's a public speaking event in my community that I met every week, and people know that. Ten o'clock fellowship time, ten thirty worship, if anyone's interested. But I think that is a, is something that the police made the, the assessment on. And I trust the police judgment because I'm not a professional security. They've had the training. They know where the risk is, and they make the assessment. So, I trust the chief's judgment on this.
Commissioner Kane and then Walker.
When I, you know, if, that, we need something. I think this is a little bit too much, and so I guess it's your task to figure out if it's too much or not enough. You know, I mean, I like the fact you reduced it. I still don't like he has it, but I, I will tell you this. I have used them specifically this week. And I didn't like it, and I think I could have, and, and they handled it extremely well. But I, I think we need to tone this back to where it's more reasonable than, than what it is.
I was among the group that supported it when it started. I am surprised at the cost. I think probably there are aspects of this that, you know, are only appropriate for executive session to be discussed. You know, I'm, I guess I agree that this is not a police budget. This is a mayor's budget. It should be part of your budget. I think the incentive to economize should be on you, Mayor, where you don't need it. I mean, I've heard what you've said. I, I can understand. And some of the church services I've been to in my life, there's probably been more discord and yelling and screaming than you'd, you'd be surprised.
I would not be surprised.
And so, I can understand, and I'm aware of certain individuals that have come to your church, that if I were in a group setting, I would ask for the security to be there, and we all know who they are. So, and it's none of the commissioners, although you might have picked out one or two of them. So, and it's none of the commissioners, although you might have picked out one or two of them.
All the commissioners are welcome every Sunday. Commissioner Bynum, and then Commissioner Johnson.
I've been places where the dignitary security was there. So, to that aspect, I've utilized the dignitary security. I would push back a little bit on what budget pot it should come from, based on the fact that I'm hearing more than two commissioners say that we've utilized the dignitary security service. So, I've gone so far as to tell Officer Turner that he has permission to see my Outlook calendar. If he wants to, or any member of the security team wants to provide dignitary security, then they need to have a look at my calendar and see where I'm going to be, which is why I try very hard to keep my Unified Government Commission activities on our Unified Government Outlook calendar. And I have given him permission to view that at least once a week and see what I'm doing in case he thinks anywhere I'm going is someplace he should be, or the other officer. So, I just wanted to share that as a, an option.
Commissioner.
Just my own experience, having a last-minute appointment at nighttime in an open setting, not knowing who all was going to be there, and was able to make a call to, to the dignitary patrol. It was very comforting knowing that they were there. They were not in their officer detail unless persons knew exactly who they were. They would not have known that they were there at all, and it was very comforting to me, at a spur-of-the-moment event that I had to go at nighttime, in an open setting, to have them there. So, I will speak to that, that it was, it was a good experience for me. And so I'm going to work with the will of the commission, but it does have its benefits.
I just want to say, to the commissioners, thank you very much for your input as we go through. Chief and I do believe this is a valuable unit. It has it, has its place within our government. It is one, as we said, is it, it's new, as the chief presented last year, and we will continue to evaluate it. We'll look for ways where we can find it to be more efficient, ways of operation that maybe there's areas that we've spent time on we don't need to. But I also believe there are some other areas, as the chief and I looked at the year-end, that we can put more emphasis on, because we do have a lot of elected officials within this government, and they're not all sitting in this room. So there are a lot of different areas where we, where we work, where we look, where we study, where we evaluate the trends of what's going on, and how we provide that specifically, you know, that's a different setting. As, as Commissioner Walker said, that's something, if we wanted to go into that, we'd probably go into an executive session, but I don't know that that's necessary. I think that's really where it comes from, the professional movements that the chief analyzes and work-throughs. But right now, we feel like this is a necessary unit, and we certainly appreciate all of your input, and I believe, as we did last year, we made significant changes. We'll probably have several of those this year as well. Thank you.
All right, that concludes this meeting. We will meet downstairs at 7:10. It takes, 7:15. It takes time to turn the electronics, so at 7:15, we'll be down in the chamber. Thank you.